Back to your seats, folks. Let's press forward right on through the lunch hour. We're good to go. Let's proceed. Returning to, for those listening, we are on Third Reading Amendment Number Four to Senate File 1003. Reading clerk, read in the amendment.
Senate File 1003, Third Reading Amendment Number Four, Page Eight after line four.
Senator Byman.
Back again, Mr. President. I move Third Reading Amendment Number Four to Senate File 1003. Ask for your favorable consideration. The premise of this amendment is to provide a little bit more protection to healthcare providers so they don't run up against being on the wrong side of the discrimination bill. It provides for a healthcare provider that they can inquire into whether a person has proof of immunity of COVID-19, a current negative test, or a current positive result from a COVID antibody test, and may use reasonable accommodation measures imposed through the least restrictive means based on the person's response to the inquiry if necessary to protect the health and safety of patients or of employees who are at increased risk of contracting COVID. It's an important protection. I think we should probably get this into the bill. And also, the next sentence says, "A healthcare provider may consider an employee to be non-vaccinated if the employee declines to provide the employee's vaccination status to the healthcare provider for purposes of determining whether we need to make reasonable combination measures." So, in other words, if the employee pleads the Fifth, the assumption is made that you're not vaccinated and that reasonable accommodations need to be provided. I think it's common sense measure here that strengthens this bill and gets it ready to move on down the hall. And I ask for your favorable vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Again, Third Reading Amendment Number Four to Senate File 1003. Discussion, Senator Cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to a concern of conflict, I will not be voting on this declaring a conflict.
Senator, further discussion? Further discussion? Okay. Are you ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor of Third Reading Amendment Number Four to Senate File 1003, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Third Reading Amendment Number Four to Senate File 1003 has passed. Back on the bill. Ready for the question on the bill? Senator Scott.
Mr. President, and let me say that I'm going to address myself to this bill, but I think much of what I say will apply to all the other COVID-related bills we've got here in this session. Mr. President, we know there is widespread feeling in the state frustrated with this whole situation we've got with COVID-19. Mr. President, frankly, I can see that frustration. I can understand. And I think some of it goes well beyond COVID-19. Mr. President, life in our modern society is full of frustrations. Bureaucracies we've got deal with have rules that don't make sense to us. Governments that we deal with have rules that don't make sense to us, even some private companies. Anybody that's dealt with certain insurance companies, or in case I had one instance with my constituents, it was a pipeline company that was causing them trouble. There are lots of things that hinge on us that don't make sense to us and have built a sense of resentment. And now, Mr. President, COVID-19 comes along, and all of a sudden, we can't live life the way we'd like to. And frankly, I think in some of the instances, it's not fair to our governments to blame them for some of the restrictions they didn't see to have COVID-19 created and placed upon us. That was done outside. They're crying the best they can to deal with it. We may disagree with some of the methods that they're crying. Now, President Trump really pushed the vaccines. A lot of people don't like that, but he thought it was the best way out of the COVID mess we were in, and he really pushed to get them done, aided by some very brilliant scientists that deserve most of the credit. What President was doing was getting the bureaucracy out of the way, getting it done fast. So, there's been a lot of frustration. And this whole session, I think, is a product of that frustration. But now, we've got to make a decision on putting something into law. And, Mr. President, what I'm afraid we're going to do with this bill and with some of the others is to put something into law that prevents some of the efforts to be sensible in trying to deal with what really is a deadly disease. And I think the amendment we just passed, Mr. President, for me crystallizes what's wrong with the bill. We made an exception for healthcare providers to allow them to take precautions in spite of the provisions of this bill, precautions they need to take to treat the disease properly, protect their patients. But what about the other businesses? Oh, you're running not a hospital, but a dude ranch or a hotel. And you have customers that are afraid that they're going to be placed at risk by people who may expose them to COVID. This bill, as I read it, you can't take precautions that you might need to, to accommodate your customers or to protect your customers from a very real risk. And that applies right across with a limited exception for healthcare providers here. Mr. President, I think we would have been better served maybe to deal with some of these issues in our next regular budget session, when maybe we would have what the federal government is doing in front of us and know what problems they might occur and what leeway we might have in dealing with them. I'm afraid with this bill, we don't have that. We don't see that, but we are putting restrictions that will prevent much of our society, much of the small, many of the small businesses we depend on.
Time.
And some of the larger. We have that will prevent a sensible response. And for those reasons, Mr. President, I urge just to vote no on this bill.
Senator Cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to concerns from certain people, I am going to declare a conflict and not vote on this.
Further discussion, we are on the bill, Senate File 1003 as amended. Senator Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirty years ago, right now, this time of year, I made a little trip across the water, through Scandinavia, through the Baltics, and clear out into the very bowels of the evil empire. On that trip in the Baltics, we saw tanks in the street. We saw soldiers enforcing the lack of personal freedoms. We had the guys in the long trench coats and the funny little hats with their KGB badges coming up to us and the people that were with us, and they said, "Documente, documents." They wanted our papers. The people with us that were from different parts of the Union, different states, had their internal passports that allowed them to travel in certain districts within the former Soviet Union. And those passports were very direct. This is where you can travel. Had all their personal information on them, had their political affiliations with them, whether or not they were party members. That's what this bill is starting to do, is to protect us from from that question, from that guy coming up and saying, "Papers, give me your documents before you can go in here, before you can travel." I know that's an expansion on where we're at. This is supposedly about vaccines and masks, maybe. But it is about passports. It's about personal freedoms, and it's about where this country is headed if we don't stop. We have to stand up at some point and draw that line in the sand, and this is it. This is what the people of Wyoming are asking us for. This is critical to our future and our freedoms. Thank you.
Let's go first to Senator Salazar, then Senator Kolb in that order.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, clearly, this is a delicate balance. And to my constituents in Fremont County, I've heard so many of you contact me. I represent a rural part of Fremont County, and so many of my constituents have called me, telling me that they're going to be out of a job, starting November 1st. And for me, what this comes down to is, should someone have to choose between basically a forced vaccination or putting food on your table for your children and your spouse or for yourself? And COVID is going to be with us for years to come. We're going to be facing these problems for years to come. And these decisions, I believe, need to be made now. And that's why I'm going to support this bill. It's not a perfect bill. It does raise some concerns for me with regard to our small business community. And I have no doubt that in the months ahead, we're going to be tweaking this. But this is something fundamentally important to my constituents for their, for many of them, their survival to just have a job. And it does involve constitutional rights. And for that reason, Mr. President, and for that reason, to my constituents in Fremont County, I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Senator Kolb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this process is, of course, why we're here, to figure out what we can do. And I hope, as we started this journey, that the constituents would look and see what's going on. So, they would have a better understanding of what we face. It isn't just, you know, federal overreach, which, what can we do about that? I mean, that's a battle fought in court. It's about what are we going to do here for the current set of events? Our our conflict is individual rights, business rights. Business rights, without a business, we're not going to have a job for folks to, you know, to go to. So, there's balance here. And this is not a perfect solution. This is nowhere close to a perfect solution. But it's something we're left to deal with because of the situation we find between the feds, government, and the whole mix of things that folks bother to listen, and I hope they do, House and Senate debate on what we're talking about. So, I'll sit here and I'll stand here and say, "This isn't perfect. This is a mess, but I think we have to do something. I think we've minimalized the impact of business. I'd rather have no impact of business. It's negative. I think as business people in the state, you have the right to run your business as you see fit. But now, we have a direct conflict with the feds and overreach. So, what are we going to do?" I think this is what we've come up with presently. I, it's going to move over to the House. It's going to be worked over there. But I just want everybody to know the other side of the chambers. And it will be debated, and there'll be a product that comes out of that. And I do look forward to that product. I will be voting for this with hesitation, but I believe it is what is needed at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion, Senate File 1003. Senator Giroux.
Thank you, Mr. President, on and against. We started this process on this bill a few days ago. For some of us, it started in committee, trying to make it a better bill. And we did our best, and it came to the floor because we wanted to have the wider discussion, and we wanted to do it through our regular process. We voted to do that, and we have, and here we are. So, we sit here or stand here today, and I stand here today before you say, "I cannot support this bill." Fellow members, fear is a horrible thing. It's insidious. And at this particular time, as my good friend from Bates Creek was talking about, it seems to be tearing at the fabric of our everyday life. It's concern. There's a lot of information. There's a lot of misinformation floating around. We're turning ourselves against each other. We're turning ourselves against our school boards. Our school boards are in hopeless conflict about safety versus the rights of parents. And then comes this bill to try to address it. And I know it's a good faith attempt to try to address it. From my point of view, and from where I sit as a businessperson, I feel like it makes me a criminal from day one or from as soon as next Friday, because if you go through the calendar and the way this bill is enacted, as soon as it becomes law, as soon as it's passed, it becomes law. It's not a top ways out there. It'll be as soon as Monday, Tuesday, who knows? But now, I'm going to be faced with a choice with a federal mandate that I don't agree with necessarily. I don't even know what it is yet, so I don't know how much I don't agree with it, but I probably won't to now some state mandates that I know I don't agree with. And either way I go, I'm going to be wrong. I'm going to be, it's going to be illegal. And as we tried to amend it today, and it's a question of degree, we busted it down from a felony. That's good news. And so, now, it'll just be a misdemeanor, but it probably is still going to be on my record thanks to another move that we've made. So, there we are. And so, now, when I started in my business a few months ago, I told my employees, told my employees, "I want you to get vaccinated." And I would consider it a favor if you do it. I think it'd be best for your safety to do it, be better for the safety of our customers, and I would take a dim view if you don't. Then, about a week ago, we had a little employee party, because that's, this is when we do our employee party for various reasons, but we do it in October. And I passed out bonuses to my employees. And you know, the ones that got vaccines got a little bigger bonus than ones that didn't. And I mentioned that when I was passing them out and said, "You know, there's still some time. Would like you to get this done before Christmas, if you would." A couple of my employees came to me afterwards and said, "You know, Mike, I just can't do it." I said, "Okay. Well, we'll put you on a schedule that when you work your four days, you're off three. On the three days, you get tested, and you come in and show your supervisor a negative test, and you're good to go. And you can, I'll give you as many tests as your family needs." And I felt like that was the common sense way. I asked, I incentivized little light threat, but then try to work it through. But no, no, now, we're going to get, we're going to get a federal mandate on one side. We're going to get a state mandate on the other side, and all you folks are going to tell me what to do. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Appreciate the help. Business is hard enough every day, trying to work through the cost of food, the cost of labor, and everything else I have to deal with, health inspector and every, all the other arms of government and stuff. But you know what? It's almost like the traffic light down the street here. When it turns red, I stop. It's a government mandate brought upon me, but you know, I do, because if I don't, I'll go through the law to probably get killed. So, I do. So, what do we do with this? I think, ladies and gentlemen, the choice for me is clear. I'm going to go and do my business the best I can. I'm going to try to go all the mandates I can, but I'm going to ask you to vote against this bill, so I have one last to deal with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I believe we saw Senators Steinmann stand first, and we'll go to Senator Hutchins. Senator Steinmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as much as I love to tell my tall colleague what to do, this bill doesn't do that, and it doesn't make him a criminal. This bill is about discrimination. So, let's review the definition of discrimination. It is the practice of unfairly treating a person or group of people differently from other groups of people. So, you're not going to be a criminal if you treat people fairly, and I think most businesses in the state of Wyoming already do that. The second, so we have nothing about employment or insurance in the bill. I just want to be clear, because we have amended all of that out. That is all gone. We do have provisions for waivers now for schoolchildren regarding COVID-19 vaccination and masking, and that is a good provision in the bill. So, just so we're all clear about what we're voting on, and that's all I wanted to make sure on, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Hutchins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Someone said to me last night that Americans are going through the largest clinical experimental trial ever. Right now, we are under the experimental, or excuse me, the emergency use authorized version of the vaccine. There's no FDA-approved vaccine out there yet for us to use. When I came down here, my mantra was what's right, what's in the Constitution, you follow, and you stand for liberty and freedom. And that's what I'm going to do. So, I'm on and for this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Case.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think we have to be really careful what we say. We have to clearly tell folks about this. This bill is about employment. This bill is about employment. The bill what this bill does is create a protected class. The old words were that the classes were race, religion, color, sex, or national origin. Think about those things. Those are pretty much things you can't decide. There's not a choice. You can't choose to be a particular race. You can't choose to be a particular national origin. Religion, I don't think you can really choose that either. I think your religion is, you know, something that's part of your culture from the very beginning, I suspect, but you know, that one, I suppose, is debatable. Can't choose your color, Mr. President. You can't choose whether you're vaccinated or not. Every one of these things really doesn't have a downside to being in this list, Mr. President. It's not a bad thing. We've morally agreed that we shouldn't discriminate on the basis of color or race. We've come to that agreement. There is not a downside. There very much is a downside with respect to vaccine status. So, it's a trade-off. It's a trade-off. And, Mr. President, I do want to correct another thing. The vaccine, one of the vaccines has had absolute approval by the FDA now. It was an experimental use, or wasn't called experimental, but it was of a different status, and it has had full approval now. It's not available to children. They're debating right now whether young children can get the vaccine. That is also a conditional use if that were to happen. You know, this summer for me, I marked a milestone. Five years since I last had cancer, Mr. President. During my course of my cancer treatments, I undertook two experimental treatments. One of them was the first time it ever even been tried in human beings. So, it was called a Phase One trial, and I was one of 66 people. Well, that probably didn't work, because I, you know, ended up getting cancer, but the second time I entered an experimental trial, grateful to do it, because there weren't a lot of options for my cancer, and it was very successful. It was a Phase Three trial, which was something that at least was demonstrated to be somewhat safe and maybe some efficacy. So, here I am. I gladly got my booster three weeks ago. So, I do believe in the science. I talk to healthcare professionals at home. They believe in masks. They do. You know, I know there are downsides to masks, but they believe in masks. They believe in vaccines, more so, overwhelmingly more so. The data, Mr. President, the people in hospitals today in Wyoming are largely unvaccinated. The people dying today are largely unvaccinated. Yes, there are exceptions on both angles. Mask use is proven to be safe. There is a very real downside to adding this to the list of discrimination. We shouldn't go there. This is about business, Mr. President. We are creating an untenable situation between our employers, between federal requirements and state requirements. And what about employers that serve in multiple states? What about the airlines? We've heard from the business community now. They don't like this bill. Thank you, Mr. President. You've been very kind. I ask if we vote no.
Thank you. Further discussion, let's go back to Senator Kinskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I left here last night, I was inclined to vote for this bill, but I got home and I started reflecting. My great-great-grandfather was an independent small businessperson. My grandfather, my father, in nearly all of my adult working career, I have owned my own business, been an independent small businessperson. And throughout that, I have opposed government regulation. I have opposed litigation. And when I see what this president has done with his administrative orders, with his overreach, I'm outraged, as are we all. And that's what we were called into special session to deal with, the president's vaccine mandates. We now have a bill in front of us that has zero impact on the president. It has zero impact on his mandates, zero impact on his overreach, but it has a huge impact on Wyoming businesses. We are about to create another protected class. And as you heard our colleague from the windy city in the center of the state say, "That creates a private litigation cause of action for anybody who feels aggrieved to sue a business." More ways to sue. The very thing I've always opposed in my life is more litigation. It's a lawyer's field day. What is a public accommodation? Are my manufacturers affected? One has a showroom. One has a museum. They're all open to the public. They give tours. They have customers come in. Are they a public accommodation? They could eliminate all doubt and say, "Closed to the public." But why should they? Who are we to say that they have to close to the public in order to protect themselves from being classified as a public accommodation? I have a friend who is on permanent chemotherapy. She is a cancer survivor. She has a store downtown. She asks that people not come in unless they are masked, and she may very well ask them not to come in if they've not been vaccinated. That's her prerogative. That's her life, and I'm not in a position to tell her. She cannot do that. In the past, in this body, I have opposed every attempt to create new protected classes. I have helped in the charge for to create new protected classes. I have helped in the charge for tort reform, so I don't have it in me now to vote for a bill that provides for still more ways to sue businesses in the state of Wyoming, for more ways to tell businesses how to run their business. We are doubling down on the victims in this. Let's remember, it is our businesses who are being victimized by the president and his directives, and now we're about to hit them again with our own overreaching mandates on and against the bill.
Senator Boner on the screen.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I share the same sentence as the previous speaker, so I'll be brief. Just to be clear, I came to the special session, I'm supporting the special session, because I'm concerned about federal overreach, I'm concerned about my constituents who will be losing their jobs, some of them on Monday. This bill has nothing to do with any of that, so I just share with you, there's a little bit of Russian thrown around, there's a Russian phrase that's along my mind, having spent some time there, having studied it, it's a tisha yadish, doshabudish. The quieter you are, the further you go, in my mind, that represents humility, and we are unaware of the consequences of this bill. It's a, I think we need a sledgehammer, this is a wrecking ball. A wrecking ball, we don't know exactly where it's gonna hit. So I'm intrigued by the idea, and intrigued by the concerns that could be coming down the line, especially with these large corporations that we depend on for our livelihoods, and many times, we know about that with the employment. I'm concerned about how that may evolve to this issue as well. Limiting services are important, but there's also, it's also important to point out that we do benefit from increases in technology, and that, you know, I haven't heard my constituents who are concerned about their jobs to be all that concerned about their ability to go to the movies, or go to the restaurant that they want to, especially in a day and the age when you can have just about anything in the world delivered to your doorstep in two days or less. So for all those reasons, I want to continue to pursue this idea, but I think the best venue for that is gonna be our session in February. I think that we have some time here, and if we do, if this does become an issue at the future point, which it may very well be, we continue this work and continue to consider how we can address this issue in a meaningful way, and a way that does more good than harm, and a way that will continue to bring people together. So for those reasons, I want to support this bill, but I just can't at this point, and so that's why I'll be voting no.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, and I'll just echo the comments of the previous two speakers, and add just a few other things. Mr. President, you assigned this bill to your committee number two, and, and looking at that bill, I, I wasn't, I have never liked the public accommodation provisions, because we had this conversation the other day, I think it puts, I puts, it puts them in the battle, this battle between the state of Wyoming and the president of the United States in an overreaching federal government mandate. And I don't want to sacrifice our businesses, and if we sacrifice our businesses, we sacrifice the people that work for them. This is a, this is a battle between the state and the federal government that we need to continue to engage and, and do, but with what we're left in this bill, I, we do that, but we do that over the bodies of our, of the, of the small businesses, potentially, of the small businesses and the people that work for them. I, I haven't heard a single person in my district who's contacted me and told me they've been denied public service because of their, their vaccination status. Haven't had one of them talk to me about that. They've talked to me about vaccination, vaccination requirements at jobs, they've talked to me about, on both sides of those types of things, I've heard a lot about schools, I've heard a lot about that, but I haven't heard one person talk to me about having been denied service because they were, whether or not they were vaccinated, and, and that's the primary purpose of this bill. I had great hope, I had some, I had a lot of interest in this bill when it first assigned to us. I was very interested in the insurance provisions, I wanted to see so hard, and I worked so hard to try and find some way to try and keep insurers from, and, and the federal government from weighing in, and trying to make people get vaccinated through insurance coverages. And I'm still very concerned about that. I spent a lot of time working on that, thinking about that, talking to people, I couldn't find a way through, and so ultimately, we took that out yesterday, voted to take it out, because there was just too many unanticipated consequences for, that I thought were from that. But with what we're left in the public accommodation, that this does, and is the main focus of this bill, I just, I'm not going to sacrifice our small business people and the ability to run their business how they deem appropriate for their purposes, and provide the safest and best workplace they can for their employees, and provide the services they want to the Wyoming people. I'm not gonna make them a casualty of this war, because they don't get a say in it, we get the say in it, and we say, you're the soldier, go fight. We're constraining these small businesses in this fight, and they may very well be the casualties, and I'm not willing to do that for this. I would also note that the governor today just announced that they had, that the state of Wyoming has joined, I think, 12 other states in filings, have finally filed suit against the mandates. I think the executive order has finally been issued, and they've immediately filed suit, and that is where, one of the major fights, where this needs to be enjoined. We're gonna have more opportunities with the bills that come over from the other side to work this. This one is not the one that we need to sacrifice and, and the, the businesses of our state and their employees in that fight. And for that reason, Mr. President, I'm, I'm a no on this one. Thank you.
Senator Landon.
Mr. President, thank you, and I just wanted to commend all the senators who have spoken this morning. First of all, thank you for your support on a measure that we brought a little bit earlier today, to try to deal with the penalty clauses that we had in the bill, and appreciated your support on that front. And I really wanted to commend the passion. So many of you have represented very, very well the districts that I know you represent very well. That said, Mr. President, I, this particular bill represents what, what part of my fear was when we decided to have a special session. My fear was that we would replace a federal mandate with a state mandate. My fear was for small business across our state, which has already endured a couple of years of, of great trial. And finally, I, I worried about what we might decide to do over the top of public health concerns. Today, for example, we added to the mix, and we rolled over the top of our local school boards. I just don't think that's proper, for, for those of us in Cheyenne to throw a blanket over the top of the state like that. You know, great passion doesn't necessarily make for great law. And unfortunately, I think that's where we are with this piece of work. I'm, I'll be a no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Senate File 1003. Further discussion. Question being called. Senate File 1003, having been read three separate times, the question is, shall the bill pass? The chief clerk will call the roll.
Senate File 1003, third reading roll call. Anderson?
No.
No. Baldwin?
No.
No. Bittman?
Aye.
Boner?
No.
No. Bouchard?
Aye.
Case?
No.
Cooper?
Aye.
Driscoll?
Aye.
Ellis?
No.
French?
Aye.
Furphy?
No.
Guru?
No.
Hicks?
Aye.
Hutchings?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Kinskey?
No.
No. Cole?
No.
No. Cost conflict? Landon?
No.
No. McCune?
Aye.
Aye. Nethercutt?
No.
No. Pappas, excused. Perkins?
Perkins, no.
No. Rothfuss?
No.
No. Salazar?
Aye.
Schuler?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Wasserberger?
No.
No. President Doc Stetter?
Aye.
Aye. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. Senate File 1003, 13 aye, 15 no, one excused, and one conflict.
Senate File 1003, having failed to receive the affirmative vote of the majority of the members elected to the Senate, Senate File 1003 has failed to pass the Senate. Senate File 1019, third reading of the Senate file.
Senate File 1019, Wyoming Gaming Commission Scrivener Error Correction, sponsored by Senator Ellis, an act relating to the Wyoming Gaming Commission.
There are no amendments. Any further discussion? Senator French.
I stand opposed to this bill. We voted to go into special session to deal with the federal vaccine mandates. We had a bill just now that was defeated, addressing some of those issues, and now we're going to deal with a bill that has nothing to do with why we're in special session? So we're in a mini general session? This isn't why we're down here to address this bill. I urge my colleagues to vote no.
Thank you. I want to go to the sponsor, maybe we'll wait on the sponsor and go back to Senator Driscoll.
Mr. President, thank you. First, I'd like to apologize to the body. I told them I wasn't gonna bring up another bill that wasn't to the topic, and I did. I knew about this bill being here. I wasn't sure where it rose to. That being said, this bill is time sensitive, it has absolute potential major repercussions on gaming in the state of Wyoming. It was an error from a previous session. And that being said, we just went through yesterday, we talked about, we're down here to do the people's work. I represent to you, we've had plenty of time to address this bill. We're paid, we're here. I spent yesterday afternoon doing nothing, because we didn't have any bills in front of us. This bill had no effect on whether we dealt with the COVID crisis or the bills, either way. It merely was to fix an error that was made that actually has real complications that potentially could have been a special session on its own. So for my end of it, yes, it's off topic, and I apologize, because I was gonna put off the board for what we did. I would point out to you, when we didn't do the special session rules, we all talked about this. We had 10 or 11 bills, and I didn't hear this conversation much. We let all the bills have a chance to get voted to the floor. We did it with other bills that didn't have topic, by the way. This bill rises to the point of enough significance to be brought up, in my opinion. So vote your conscience however. We're paid to be here, one way or the other. Make whatever argument you want. We're paid for the day. We're down to a third reading vote, and really, the only thing holding it up is us, we're all done. We're gonna walk out the door, it's 12:03. We're gonna walk out the door, we've got the rest of the day. This really has no effect on whether we took up other bills or not. So this bill is important, it is important in my mind, maybe it dies on the other side, and maybe you'll get to see a whole lot more slot machines in your community without any input into it. And if that's what you want, that's fine by me. Thank you.
Further discussion before we go back to the sponsor, Senator Bouchard.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I heard things on the floor about how we were elevating this COVID thing to, to this monumental eruption in Yellowstone, scoffing at what we were doing down here about COVID, that we shouldn't even be here. And now, we're doing a bill that has nothing to do with COVID. And I, I want to say to the bill sponsor, I, I really do feel that you've been placed in a position, and I'm not, definitely, this is not personal. I think we can work on this during the session, just like we were told on everything else that we, we came here for. That's what we were told. We needed a way to, to a regular session, and here we are. We, we didn't do what we told constituents, constituents what we were doing down here. We said this was a special session to deal with one topic. We, we were not doing that. I'm gonna be against this bill. I'll vote no.
We are on Senate File 1019. Any further discussion before we go to the sponsor? Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, you know, things that don't set well with me are when government hurts people, and we have those conversations all the time in this chamber. Are our actions going to hurt individual citizens in Wyoming? And we have robust debate on what that looks like. The reason I brought this is through a mistake, a drafting error mistake. We are hurting law enforcement that we hired for the Gaming Commission. Their retirement benefits are completely up in the air. How would you feel if you went to work every day, and when you got your paycheck and you looked at it, you don't know what's happening with your retirement? That's what's happening right now. People are hurting. I don't think anyone would sit in this room and say, well, we'll just trust for that to get taken care of in February with maybe an enactment in July 1st. No, we've, we've wronged people through a drafting error. That's urgent, and they're being hurt right now. We have important gaming laws on the books, those same law enforcement officers, what if they're acting in the scope of their duty? And someone says, nah, no, you're not, you're not a peace officer. Why would we do that? So to me, this is an urgent matter. To me, I could have approached our leadership and said, I think we need a special session just to fix this. But seeing the trend of this body where we were headed with a special session, I brought you a bill that was urgent, that shouldn't be controversial and shouldn't be amended. You see the, the substance of it right now. It's, it's meant to cure a mistake. So we can either adjourn, kill it, that's fine, maybe, I don't know how the fate of this bill down the hall, that's fine, but I don't want to have someone's livelihood and their retirement benefits put into question without at least giving it a try to fix it. I'm really disappointed when I look at the fact that to do our job right in this special session, which I believe we needed to take these days to allow the public to weigh in on amendments, and I'm really proud of this body for taking that time to produce really good amendments that led us to a lot of great debate. It was a really nice exercise for all of us to come together and debate these bills as thoroughly as we should have. We, that's good work. But the fact of the matter remains that during the special session, did we have time to work this? Do we have time? Absolutely. And we owe it to the taxpayers to utilize that time and be efficient with our resources. We have made a mistake. Can we fix it? I'd urge your aye vote.
Thank you. Ready for the question? Question being called. Senate File 1019, having been read three separate times, the question is, shall the bill pass? The chief clerk will call the roll.
Senate File 1019, third reading roll call.
Aye.
Baldwin?
Aye.
Aye. Bittman?
No.
Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard?
No.
No. Case?
Aye.
Cooper?
Aye.
Driscoll?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
French?
No.
No. Furphy?
Aye.
Guru?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Hutchings?
No.
No. James?
No.
No. Kinskey?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Cost?
No.
Landon?
Aye.
Aye. McCune?
No.
No. Nethercutt conflict? Conflict? Pappas, excused. Perkins?
Perkins, aye.
Aye. Rothfuss?
Aye.
Salazar?
No.
Schuler?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
No.
No. Wasserberger?
Aye.
President Doc Stetter?
No.
No. Closing vote? Closing vote? Closing? Vote closed. Senate Files 1019, nineteen aye, nine no, one excused, one conflict.
Senate File 1019, having received the affirmative vote of the majority of the members elected to the Senate, Senate File 1019 has passed the Senate. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, that clears the desk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate stand adjourned until 7:00 AM, Monday, November 1st.
Announcements?
Mr. President, privileged.
I think you already made the motion.
I have.
Go ahead.
I apologize for the time. Uh, we visited with staff about it. In order to get bills properly presented to get to committee, we have to come in and read the bills in. And we, I really, myself included, would love to have been able to come in later, drive down. This is the only way that we can have bills up for debate on a timely fashion. So Monday, we'll go in. They'll assign the bills to committee and then we're going to stand at ease while the appropriations committee works the bills. I think that may take as many as two to four hours to do that. There's going to be a lot of public comment. So that's explanation.
Mr. Floor Leader, for the record, then, with that explanation, would you make the motion again for the record?
Mr. President, I move we stand adjourned until 7:00 AM, Monday, November 1st.
Announcements? Announcements? You've heard the motion.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Go ahead. Senator Perkins.
Mr. President, your committee number two will meet on Monday morning immediately upon the morning recess of the Senate to undertake whatever bills may pass the Senate or are assigned to Committee Number Two to hear those bills. And I just want to make that announcement. And so the official announcement has to be posted later, but we're going to be, we're going to be at work Monday morning. Thank you.
And your time again, Senator.
It'll be fifteen minutes of after re, after the recess, Monday recess, when we recess after those bills are introduced and referred.
Thank you. That's for those of listening across the state. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? You've heard the motion. All those in favor, the Senate will stand adjourned until 7:00 AM, Monday.